Counsel, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Do I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you for your patience. We're sorry that we're a few minutes beyond six, but welcome to Meridian City Council Meeting. Thank you for joining us. For the record, it is Tuesday, September 20th. A few minutes after six, we'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we will be led in our pledge by Cub Scout Troop 365 if they would like to come forward.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you Cub Scouts, young man, I would like to give you a city of Meridian plan from the beginning. Good job.
You deserved that patch.
Okay, item number three is our community invocation. Pastor Troy Drake is here with us to lead us in the invocation. If you will all join us or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Evening. Thank you for having me. It's hard to follow the Cub Scouts, but I'll try. Lord God, thank you so much for this country that we live in and the freedoms that we have to choose our representatives and to work where we want to and live where we want to and believe in serving, serve you or not. And so we just appreciate this country. And God, we just pray for safety over Meridian tonight and the rest of our country. Or just all the craziness that have been happening. We just ask that you'd be with the families elsewhere. And, you know, just God, we ask for you to be over our police officers and firefighters and all those who protect us from harm and that you would keep our city safe tonight. And we do just consider those who have suffered recently in our nation. And Lord, lastly, I also just pray for our city council meeting here tonight. And these, the mayor and the council members, Lord, we're just so thankful for them and pray that you would bless them and bless their lives for their service to us all and that you would give them wisdom here tonight and all the affairs, the business of the city. And we just trust them with those things, God, and pray that they would make good decisions and would do according to your will and plan. And so we just honor you tonight, Lord, and it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
On the agenda, under the consent agenda, five R is the resolution number sixteen dash one one six oh. Five S is resolution number sixteen dash one one six one. Under five T, the resolution is sixteen dash one one six two. And under department reports, resolution number under seven A is sixteen dash one one six three. Seven B is resolution number sixteen dash one one six four. Seven C is resolution number sixteen dash one one six five. Item seven D is resolution number sixteen dash one one six six. Item seven E is resolution number sixteen dash one one six seven. And item seven F is sixteen dash one one six eight resolution. Under action items, we have to add an eight one, which needs to be a resolution, proposed resolution of sixteen dash one one six nine. And that is a resolution adopting the annual rate adjustment for the solid waste collection. Nine A, the ordinance number is sixteen dash one seven oh seven. With that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Mr. Byrd, will you restate that? Sorry. I'm just kidding.
I know it.
Any questions? I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Under consent agenda, as I stated earlier, the resolution numbers for R is sixteen dash one one six oh. S is sixteen dash one one six one. And T is sixteen dash one one six two. With that, I move we approve the consent agenda. Mayor, sign the clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item seven A is a proposed resolution on the appointment of our youth member for the HPC, Ella Kramer. Actually, do I have any of my youth council member appointees here? Awesome. I'm going to go ahead and ask for council action and then I'll see if you, either of you would like to make comments. I'll invite you up at that time. So thank you for joining us tonight. You can go ahead and sit down. I'll call on you in a moment. Counsel, the A through F, actually, A through E, are appointments for our youth seats. They're effective for one year. We conducted interviews last week, seems like a long time ago. And I can tell you that the, we interviewed thirteen youth members that were all interested in these youth seats on our citizen commissions. And they would knock your socks off. So I am really proud. And I have already informed the chairs of each of these commissions that they're going to be blown away by their newest members. And I'm really excited to have our youth voice on these various commissions. So I would ask your approval of these appointments. I have Ella Kramer to the Historic Preservation Commission, Lance Bumgardner to the Transportation Commission. And I will tell you that Lance is returning. He's served one year on the Transportation Commission and was a very active participant. I have Taylor Farmer on our Meridian Arts Commission, Kayla McNay on our Parks Commission, and Victoria Men, for a gull. I worked on it, on our Solid Waste Advisory Commission. So once I have your approval, I will see if we have a comment.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
With your permission, I would move that we approve resolutions number sixteen one one six three, sixteen one one six four, sixteen one one six five, sixteen one one six six, and sixteen dash one one six seven.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the appointments on items seven A through E. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. And at this point, I'll ask Victoria if she would like to make comments. You would need to come right up.
I would like to thank you for offering me this position, and I'm really proud to say that I accepted it. And I'm excited to see what I can help do this year.
Yeah, and I'll tell you that she was very anxious to be a youth representative and to add her input into our process. And so I'm excited to have you. And, okay, so it is, I think, Taylor, right?
Wow, that's really loud. I would like to thank you for honoring me with this position, and I really hope that with this position, I can make a great amount of change within the arts and culture within our city.
And so you want to tell us a little bit about your interest in the arts?
I, when I was younger, was in the theater. I took art last year. Not my biggest strong suit, but I learned a lot from it. And I know, I know a lot of great artists from my school by taking art. And I was told about the youth exhibit of art in my interview. And I think that we could take a lot from those smaller schools and really implement their ideas and their art and let them be heard through that exhibit this year.
And I will tell you that our arts commissioner, our youth representative, also is responsible for putting together an art exhibit for youth. And so we made sure that we shared that. In the past, those exhibits have been phenomenal and we're excited to work with you.
I'm excited to work with all of you as well.
Appreciate you being here. And proud Karens as well.
Bring your own cheering section. That's smart.
And I think, did I see someone else stand up?
Hi.
Kayla, right?
Yes.
Come on forward.
Hello, I'm Kayla McNay, and I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity to show what I can really affect with the city. And I can just try, I'll try my hardest, and I'm very excited for this year. So thank you.
Thank you. We're excited to have you as well. And like I said, on all the other chairs of the various commissions, they have been warned about each of your energy, your enthusiasm, and are looking forward to having you onboard.
Thank you so much.
So thank you. I guess the third one, we really got it right. So let's give all three of them. Oh, and Ella. Now, I will just want, I just want to tell you, on Ella, she came prepared with specific ideas. And so she had done her homework and very excited to have you introduce yourself.
Well, I really love history so much. I'm so excited about this opportunity. And I'm so excited on what I can learn and what I can do to make the city a better place.
Thank you, Ella, for being here and for your interest in our history. It's, it was very rewarding to have young members that had an interest in the history, the roots of our community. And we're excited to have you onboard as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the only one that isn't here is Lance. And again, he's a returning commissioner. I think, Mr. Cavanagh, you've worked with Lance and-
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, Lance's enthusiasm, I think, is an understatement. There's a guy who's motivated and passionate about transportation. I don't think, when I was in high school, I could maybe even spell transportation. And let alone, they've got a great individual like Lance who's really committed to our community. And so I'm excited to see that he's being reappointed to this commission.
I would challenge you, if you tied his hands to his side, if he could still talk.
Not likely.
No. Again, thank, thank you all. You do not have to stay the rest of the meeting. You're going to have your own meetings that you'll get to sit through. So again, thank you for being here with us, and we appreciate your interest. Unless you're doing it for credit in government classes or anything else. And I know you're not that age yet, so. Okay, item eight A is a public hearing on Republic Services, proposed 2017 fee schedule. Madam Mayor?
Got one more, item F.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is Mark here? I didn't see him. Okay, item F is the resolution sixteen dash one one six eight. Mark Nelson is interested in serving on our Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Probably ten years or more ago, he served on our Planning and Zoning Commission. And then he got very involved in work and travel. So he's, he's back homebound again. Not homebound, but he's, he's at least in town and ready to recommit to serving our citizens as well. Stephen Corey to seat four, he's a returning commissioner. He's been the chair. And he also represents our commission and our city as well on the Ada County Advisory Commission. So both of these, I enthusiastically bring for your approval tonight. Ms. Mylum?
I move that we approve resolution number sixteen dash eleven sixty eight.
Have a motion in a second to approve item seven F. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Okay, I will now move to the public hearing on Republic Services, proposed 2017 fee schedule. I will open the public hearing with comments. Or questions? I think we've already heard this. We heard this as we moved to put it on the agenda. I would ask if there's anyone in our audience tonight who would like to make comment on this item.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the proposed-
We need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, close the public hearing on eight A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing on item eight A. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes.
Oh, it's over there.
And if the record will note that Mr. Cavanagh had to leave. Mr. Nary?
I was just going to say, the item aye that was added is the resolution to approve that. If you want to, you can do that now. Or you can wait till it comes up on the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mylum?
We move to aye, eight aye. Okay.
It seems appropriate.
It seems appropriate. I move that we approve resolution number one one dash eleven sixty nine, adopting the annual rate adjustment for the solid waste collection services by Republic Services, authorizing the City of Meridian Billing Department to collect such rate and providing an effective date.
Second.
Okay, the motion was to approve resolution sixteen dash one one six nine. Any discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Thank you. Item eight B is a public hearing for H 2016 dash zero zero eight two. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a preliminary plat. This site consists of 12.08 acres of land. It's owned R8 and located south of Victory Road and west of South Locust Grove Road. A little history, this property was annexed with a development agreement and preliminary platted back in 2006 as part of Tanana Valley subdivision. In 2007, a new preliminary plat was approved for Kavanaugh subdivision, which included the subject property. Several time extensions have been approved for the plat. Since approval of the plat, individual parcels have been sold off and are now under many different ownerships and are being developed separately rather than as a single master planned project as originally intended. The subject developer is developing all of the property north of the Reidenbach Canal and east of Standing Timber Way. Standing Timber is this street right here, and then the Reidenbach runs right along here. So everything north of that is under this developer's project. The original preliminary plat did include land that's south of the Reidenbach, so because the previous preliminary plat depicted all of the site amenities for the overall development north and south of the canal to be provided on the north side of the canal, staff didn't feel it was reasonable to require this development to provide all of the amenities for the overall subdivision.
Can you hear in the back of the room? Can you move your microphone closer?
Therefore, with the last time extension, staff required the remainder of the property to be re-subdivided and meet current development standards. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is approximately half of it is designated mixed-use neighborhood with a neighborhood center overlay, and the other half is designated medium-density residential. The applicant is proposing a new preliminary plat consisting of forty-eight building lots and four common area lots on 12.08 acres of land in the R8 zoning district in the same layout as shown on the previous preliminary plat. The minimum lot size is 6,827 square feet, with the average lot size being 8,698 square feet. The proposed density is 3.97 units per acre, consistent with the medium-density residential future land use designation, but below the density desired in the mixed-use neighborhood designated areas. Access is proposed via internal local streets within the development. The applicant proposes .44 of an acre or 3.65 percent of qualified open space, consisting of fifty by one hundred open space area, six-foot wide parkways and micro path lots, and a pathway as a side amenity. In the overall development, which encompasses fifty-four acres of land, a total of 7.38 acres or 13.63 percent of qualified open space, and a gazebo, basketball court, pathways, and a tot lot will be provided as amenities. The applicant requests the overall common area is allowed to count toward that required with this development. Staff is amenable to this request. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the future homes within this development, as shown. Building materials appear to consist of a mix of horizontal lap siding and vertical board and batten siding with stone veneer brick accents. The commission did recommend approval on the subject application. Scott Wonders, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Nancy Buckley commented, and written testimony was received from Scott Wonders, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. Key issues of public testimony was concern of overdevelopment in Meridian and of school and roads not being able to support growth. There are no outstanding issues for city council, and no written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Scott Wonders with J.B. Engineers, 250 South Beachwood in Boise. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here representing the applicant for this project. This, the Silver Water South plat, or pre-plat before you, is basically the third phase of the project as a whole. It's about forty, fifty-four acres. We just completed phase three this summer, and this would be probably slated, if approved, to be started next spring. So all the site amenities were either constructed with phase two or phase three, so just to the north. And you'll see on the subsequent application for north, there's an exhibit that will show where the common open space is for this side of the development, where all the tot lot and the basketball court were installed or should be installed this summer before, before the completion of phase three. We're in agreement with all of the staff recommend- We're in agreement with all of the staff recommendations and the conditions of approval, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Is there a reason we are not hearing both of these at the same time, so we can see it?
We certainly can. There are two separate preliminary plat applications, but we certainly can.
Counsel, if you wouldn't mind, I think it would be appropriate, since they're adjoining, and then we can take comment on both the phases.
So, would you like me to present the other preliminary plat?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Would you like to officially open that?
Yes, I will open the public hearing for H 2016-0083.
Okay, this is the second preliminary plat in this general area for Silver Water North. This site is 4.12 acres of land. It's also zoned R8, located on the south side of East Victory Road, west of South Locust Grove. This preliminary plat consists of 13 building lots and one common area lot on 4.12 acres of land in the R8 zoning district. Here's just a general area here for this plat lies, and then the preliminary plat. The minimum lot size in this phase is, or in this subdivision, I should say, is 8,295 square feet, with an average lot size of 11,218 square feet. Density is 3.16 units per acre. Access to this development is proposed on the plat from East Spring Lloyd Drive, an internal local street, proposed to be constructed with Phase Three of Silver Water subdivision by way of South Mesa Road via East Victory. Mesa runs along the east side of the property, and then this is Victory right here along the north. And then again, conceptual building elevations are the same as previously shown. Scott Wonders, the applicant's representative, testified in favor at the commission hearing. No one testified in opposition or commented. The applicant submitted written testimony in agreement with the staff report. And that is all staff has to offer on that.
Is there anything that shows those two together in relation to...
This is the area. So this is the Silver Water North here. It does not show the preliminary plat overlay on it. This is south, right here.
Okay.
Yes.
Madam Mayor? While we're doing that, Scott, is this... Was this property back in the Kavanaugh time? Did it have a school site on it, that location?
That's correct. On the north, on what we're calling Silver Water North, basically the reason why we have two preliminary plats is they're not contiguous. So now we have to have two preliminary plats, thus the north and south. So the north was proposed to be a school site, however, the school has declined that site in recent years, and so they don't need it anymore, so we're just converting it into two cul-de-sacs to be incorporated into the development. So Phase One and Two are to the west. Once Son gets a... You'll have a better concept of where it's at. And then Phase Three is kind of in the middle of north and south. And so with Phase Three, we had a park area where we constructed a basketball court, kind of a gazebo, or not a gazebo, but like a sitting area, and some trails. And north is just to the north of this park area, and then Silver Water South is on the bottom end of the subdivision. So you can see in blue is what is constructed or currently being completed this year. And in yellow, obviously to the north is Silver Water North, and then the larger 12 acres to the south is Silver Water South. So we have a micro path that connects up to the common area space that's just below Silver Water North that has all those amenities in it. And then for the eastern portion, Phases One and Two, they were more off of Standing Timber. There's open space over there for those residents on that side. So overall, even though these are less than the 10 percent combined with the overall development, it's were a little over 13 and a half percent in open space. And we're also in agreement with the staff report and conditions of approval for Silver Water North as well.
Thank you. This is helpful.
Yeah.
I could not vision what we were talking about, so I appreciate that.
So yeah, Kavanaugh was a much larger development, and in the downturn, it was pretty much divided up into like 20 different owners, and then this developer purchased this 54 acres. So we're just kind of cleaning up some development agreement and conditions that don't really apply to this parcel with these last two phases.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two public hearings open, on 8B and C. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this, on either of these? Counsel, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearings on H 2016-0082 and H 2016-0083.
I have a motion, a second, to close public hearings on items 8B and C. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes, most caring. Okay, we can consider item 8B.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Byrd?
I move we approve H 2016-0082, include all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8B. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 8C?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Byrd?
I move we approve H 2016-0083, and to include all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8C. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 8D is a public hearing for item H 2016-0076. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
One moment here. Alrighty. Next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning, conditional use permit, and preliminary plat. This site consists of 17 acres of land, zoned R40, located at 1470 North Locust Grove Road. It's just southeast of the Locust Grove Fairview intersection. This property was previously platted as lots in Pleasant Valley subdivision. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is high-density residential. The applicant proposes to annex 17 acres of land with an R40 zoning district, consistent with the high-density residential future land use map designation for this site. The proposed zoning and multifamily residential use of the property is consistent with the multifamily residential property to the east, which is also zoned R40, and provides a transition between the commercial uses to the north and the future mixed-use development to the south. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily residential development consisting of 51 four-plex structures containing a total of 244 dwelling units in a proposed R40 zoning district. A gross density of 12.87 units per acre, with a net density of 16.68 units per acre, is proposed, which falls within the density range desired in medium-high-density residential designated areas of 8 to 15 units per acre, which is below that of 15 units per acre desired in high-density residential designated areas. The proposed density will require approval of a step down in density from high-density residential to medium-high-density residential by city council. The units consist of a mix of two- and three-bedroom units. Parking is provided on the site in excess of UDC standards. One building elevation was submitted for the proposed multifamily structures. Staff recommends additional building types with a mix of colors and materials are provided for variety within the development as set forth in the Architectural Standards Manual. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 51 building lots and three common area lots on 15.85 acres of land. A phasing plan was submitted that shows two phases of development, starting on the eastern portion of the site, as shown on the left there. The plat submitted with this application depicts two accesses. And this is the original, excuse me, plat right here, depicted two accesses via Wilson Lane at the north boundary of the site, with no access via Locust Grove. Because the congestion is currently a problem at this intersection for traffic accessing Locust Grove via Wilson, ACHD's traffic engineers determined a full access via Locust Grove would help to improve the situation, rather than having all of the traffic flowing through Wilson. A traffic impact study was submitted to ACHD for this project. A revised plat was submitted based on ACHD's requirements. Staff supports the proposed accesses shown on the revised plat if council approves a waiver to UDC 11-3A-3 for an access via an arterial street. A 25-foot-wide landscape buffer is required along Locust Grove Road, a total of 3.07 acres, or 19.36 percent of qualified open space and site amenities, consisting of half the street buffer along Locust Grove Road, a 20-foot linear open space area along Wilson Lane, common area where the clubhouse, swimming pool, and tot lot is located, and miscellaneous open grassy areas that are a minimum of 20 by 20 in area, is proposed with this development, which complies with UDC standards. A 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway is also proposed in accord with the pathways master plan along the Settlers Canal, which is along the southern boundary of the site. Because there is an existing common area that abuts the east boundary of this site in the adjacent multifamily development, and that is in this area right here, staff is recommending the open space, which is labeled as a dog park, right here where my pointer is, proposed along the south side of lots 20 and 21, to the north side of these lots, which will provide a view corridor to the existing common area instead of walling it off with buildings. The Settlers Canal Jackson Drain runs along the southern boundary of this site. Because it is a large facility, the applicant is requesting a waiver to UDC 11-3A-6A3 from city council for the waterway to remain open and not be piped. The commission did recommend approval of the subject applications. Scott Wonders, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Nancy Buckley commented, and written testimony was received from Greg Ramp from Air Incorporated, business to the east of this property, and Scott Wonders, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. The key issues of public testimony was concern of overdevelopment in Meridian and of school and roads not being able to support growth. Traffic concerns at the Wilson Lane-Locust Grove Road intersection until Wilson is extended to the east in the future. Key issues of discussion by the commission was relocating the common area along the east boundary to the north side of the four residential structures, so that it aligns better with the common area to the east. So that is taking this area right here and moving it to the north side of these four structures here. Direct access via Locust Grove and traffic and congestion at the Wilson-Locust Grove Road intersection. The pinwheel design of the structures with only one building type and footprint. And lastly, the commission was in support of the applicant's request for a waiver to UDC 11-3A-6 to allow the Settlers Canal Jackson Drain to remain open along the southern boundary of the site and not be piped. The commission did change a couple of items from the staff's recommendation. They modified development agreement provision 1.1.1D to not require more than one building type, provided that structures are offset 90 degrees from each other, and a variety of at least three different color palettes are used. And to modify condition 1.1.3E to require the dog park open space to relocated to the north side of lots 18 and 19, block one, which is actually shown as lots 19 and 20, block one, on the revised plat. Outstanding issues for city council is the applicant requests a waiver to allow the Settlers Canal to remain open and not be piped along the south boundary of the site. No written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time for staff?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
If it's all the R15 qualifications, why are we annexing R40 instead of R15? Or is it just the density? Councilman Mayor, they could, you could, zone R15 instead. They're asking for R40 because it's consistent with the high-density residential future land use designation for this site, and that's a maximum of 40 units per acres. You could certainly downzone it to R15 with a step down in the density designation on the comprehensive plan, either way. Thank you.
So it meets the R15. They were just requesting R40 to meet, to comply with the comp plan.
I believe so, Madam Mayor. The density is within that. It's 12.87 units per acre. I'm not absolutely positive about the dimensional standards without looking at it. I think it would meet, but I'm not absolutely positive.
Thank you. Any further questions at this point? Is the applicant here? Thank you for joining us. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Scott Wonders with JUB, 250 South Beachwood Avenue in Boise. Here representing the applicant on this project. Let's see, we're requesting the annexation rezoned to R40 with the CUP and the preliminary plat, and the R40 zoning was really just to stay consistent with what was labeled on the comp plan. I think it does meet most of the R15 criteria, and we wouldn't have any issue with having it zoned R15, just as long as all the dimensional standards are... Were not restricted in any way between R15 and R40. We are requesting 204 units on 51 buildings. We have a little over three acres of open space, which is roughly 19 percent. Couple of the key items, the required parking on this site is 408 spaces. A lot of issues with parking in a lot of these areas is there's never enough, and we're actually providing 489. So we're actually overparked by 80 spaces, or 81 spaces. We're including amenities that will include two gazebos, a swimming pool with a 5,800-square-foot clubhouse, a large open space area with a tot lot, a dog park, and a 10-foot pathway along the Jackson Drain and the Settlers Canal that abuts us on the south property line. We don't have any issues with relocating the dog park and shifting those four buildings south, and then just flip-flopping the dog park to the north. That is not an issue for us. To clarify, the waiver request for the open ditch, the Jackson Drain is actually a very large drain on the south, and our property line only goes to the center line. That is what we are requesting the waiver to leave that open. The Settlers Canal is a much smaller ditch. It's probably going to require a 24 or 30-inch pipe, but we're willing to pipe that, and actually we are going to pipe that portion of it. It's piped to the east, and obviously it's piped to the west, so we'll make that pipe connection for that. But our waiver request is specifically for the Jackson Drain. We did some hoop jumping, I think, right before planning and zoning, when we got our staff report from ACHD, when they asked us to eliminate one of our Wilson Lane connections and make one out to Locust Grove. So we are requesting that entrance be approved as well as a full access. So what ACHD was contemplating... So what ACHD was contemplating when they asked us to do this was to alleviate the left-turn delays off of Wilson Lane onto Locust Grove. So we're requesting that full access. And hopefully in the future, when Locust Grove is widened and improved, that probably may get restricted in the future, but I would assume that there'll be some kind of U-turn capability at Fairview at that time. And hopefully Wilson Lane will go through to the east. But, and then we are requesting that, the condition that was accepted by the planning and zoning for the one building type. This is kind of a pinwheel design where there, this is a fourplex unit, and each side has its own entrance. So for each unit, they have their own separate entrance on each side. And then with the, I guess, the variation in the elevations and the color palettes is what we're proposing to mix that up, and then with the building orientation. If Sony could actually run that, we have a fly-through that kind of shows a visual three-D rendering of what it would look like. That might help. And so this would be looking east on Wilson Lane, and then here shortly we'll be turning into what would be the, the single entrance on Wilson Lane. I think part of the conditions as well, while this is planned, I'll kind of go through a couple of other items, is that they, that we were requested to put twenty bike racks in, or spaces for twenty bikes, which we will add and disperse through the development as well. So this is looking back to the west. A lot of the, the actual landscaping that you see here is actually rendered to, to actually emulate the actual landscape plan that's been prepared for this project. So basically what you see is what's going to be actually planted on the project. And then I think one other item that was pointed out in the staff report was providing a safe pickup point for schools, students, and we'll work with the school district on wherever the school will end up picking up students from this facility. We'll make sure that there's a sufficient area for the students to wait while they're So next you'll see, this is the back of the clubhouse with the pool. It's a two-story clubhouse. This will be built with phase one. And then you can kind of see beyond the pool, there's actually a parking area. That parking area was actually eliminated, and we added a tot lot into that area. So since we were so overparked, we thought, the city staff had requested that we add a little more open space where we added the tot lot. And you'll see that here on the next slide. Other than that, we're in agreement with the staff report. And if you have any questions, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, not really a question for you, just wanted to thank you for bringing us this with the pinwheel design. I think it looks so much better, just like bigger houses, rather than just the stacked apartments that a lot of citizens come to us with heartburn over. So thank you for investing in that style instead.
All right, I'll make sure I pass it on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
One question, Scott. If, what if the school district's recommendation is that there's a recessed nook on Wilson for the school bus? I can envision them, if asked, make that recommendation.
So what we are visioning, wherever they decide, if it's on Wilson, which I would, it's either going to be somewhere internally, and there's a spot right in front of the clubhouse, that would be a perfect spot for the buses to pick them up. But if it's going to end up being on Wilson, I would hope it wouldn't be on, on Locust Grove. But what we would do is provide like a widened sidewalk in there, maybe like a ten-by-ten area, so they don't, if you don't have a large number of students, that they spill out into the street. So we'll just make it an extra wide standing area for them. That's what we're proposing. We haven't, I haven't discussed it with the school district, but we'll certainly be amenable to whatever they would like to see.
Okay. Madam Mayor, one other question with, at ACHD, was there discussion on any conflicting traffic movements with the proposed development across the street? And folks exiting directly onto Locust Grove, you know, heading north and then trying to turn west there and vice versa? Talk to me about those conflicts.
Yeah, so their main concern is obviously Wilson. They understand that there's a huge issue that anywhere on Locust Grove, south of Fairview. So they're just trying to find a way to alleviate the left-turn conflicts. Now, there is an entrance probably about two hundred and fifty feet south of where our proposed entrance will be, on the opposite side. But they are proposing to do some kind of lane delineation or kind of a lane split to, so that there aren't any left-turn conflicts in that location. ACHD, at the time we got our staff report, said they were going to still work with their traffic engineers to figure out how they were going to delineate Locust Grove in order to accommodate this entrance. I haven't gotten any feedback from them on that at that time, but.
And so what has the conversation been about the stacking at that intersection? Because it does stack back quite a distance.
Yes. You know, they didn't really have a solution, and I think this was their, their solution with the, with the Locust Grove, is at least providing a second opportunity. I think one thing that this does do alleviates the cut-through traffic through like the DMV parking lot and a few others to get out to Fairview. So I think in the end, it's probably not the perfect solution, but I think this is probably the best solution at this time. We're, you know, there's a small gap on Wilson Lane to the east before you get to the Pine Bridge development, and I don't know when and if that'll ever get extended through. But we are providing an additional eleven feet along Locust Grove for the future lane widening. From what I understand, that's coming up on the next five-year plan, if I'm, if I'm correct on that. So hopefully this is a short-term issue once Locust Grove gets widened, hopefully within the next five years at that location.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, ask a question.
Yes.
Sony, can you bring up the phasing plan, please? Scott, how many apartments, buildings are in the, how many dwelling units do we have in phase one?
It's a, it'd be roughly half, so it's a hundred and four units, so that would be twenty-six buildings. And they are sprinkled, so.
Okay, perfect. And then the other question is, the access road out to Locust Grove will be built with phase two?
Correct. And we would, we could look at providing an emergency access to that location with phase one, like a, like a all-weather access if, if needed.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that, that's what was going on.
Yeah, we checked with Perry this last week on what the criteria was, and I think we're well under the, the maximum. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing on item eight D. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item?
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Deborah Ressman, one-one-three-zero-three West Hickory Nut Street in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
And I own a couple.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Thank you. I own a couple of fourplexes right next door on Wilson Lane, and I'm real excited about this new project. It'll just continue to bring the value up, and I love the plan. I do have just a question about the dog park area, like basically what is going to separate the current fourplexes that are there now with the new, with the new subdivision? Is there going to be a fence there? Will the dogs be allowed to, you know, to wander over into, into the other area, that sort of thing? And the other question and concern I had was, would that canal that is open currently, the way I understand it, half of it is owned by this group? And when you walk by there, it really looks like it's a dangerous place for people, you know, to fall into or whatever, and you can't see them. There's a lot of brush in there. There's a lot of bob-wired vents just stuck in there. It's really a mess, and I just didn't know who was really responsible for cleaning that up.
Thank you. Two good questions, and we'll ask the applicant in his closing remarks to address those. Thank you. Any other testimony?
Scott Wonders, JUB, two fifty South Beachwood, for the record. We are proposing to put a fence around the entire development, and then as well for the dog park, it would have a four-foot, kind of like an open rod-on-iron type fencing around the dog park. So there was an existing tenant on the property that had been leasing that property for a number of years. That's in the process of being cleaned up. So once, I guess, once we move to the next step, that'll all be cleaned up here in the next probably six months, I would believe, to be, get ready for construction. So all the barbed wire and miscellaneous stuff that's been laying around there for probably a number of years will all be cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant or staff?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
Are we ready to close this? I forgot to ask him a question.
I thought you were going to ask him a question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I move that we close the public hearing of H two zero one six dash zero zero seven six.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on item eight D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
First, a comment to Scott. This is a, this is a really nice apartment project, and I appreciate all the amenities and putting everything in with phase one, so kudos to you guys. I move that we approve H two zero one six dash zero zero seven six with all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
And waivers?
What?
Second.
The waiver that was requested on tiling.
Thanks. A waiver allowing the Jackson Drain to remain open. And not yet, not piped along the southern boundary.
And the entrance to Locust Grove?
The what?
The entrance to Locust Grove.
Oh, and allowing the entrance directly to Locust Grove.
Second.
Nice job, Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Now, we're leaving the Jackson Drain open, right?
Just the Jackson.
Where he's already said they're going to take the Settlers Canal and tile it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
I have a motion carrying. Item eight D is a public hearing on H two thousand sixteen dash zero zero nine one. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Give my slide where it needs to go here. Before you, first is an application for a development agreement modification. The site consists of four point six four-two acres, is zoned LO, located at eighteen fifty-five North Black Cat Road. In two thousand and five, this property was annexed and zoned with a development agreement. The recorded development agreement currently restricts the use of this site for a church. So the applicant is requesting to modify the existing development agreement that was approved with the annexation for this property to allow for a telecommunications facility. And the current development agreement is explicit and only a church use being allowed. And so interpreting that, staff has asked the applicant to come forward with a development agreement modification to modify that. So this is their, is their current site plan. The tower that they're proposing would be located in this area here. I've also included an elevation for that tower. So the applicant proposes to modify section five under conditions governing development of subject property of the development agreement to allow the construction of a wireless communication facility. So the applicant, as I said, has provided the site plan and the, the elevation for the slimline tower they are, they are proposing. In the LO district, the wireless communication facility is a principally permitted use if it falls into one of several categories of which a slimline facility is included. So this proposed slimline facility is subject to the specific use standards of the UDC and final design of the facility, and compliance with these standards will be verified with a certificate of zoning compliance application. Staff did not receive any written testimony. As of the writing of this staff report, I believe you have been given comment from an adjoining neighbor, a neighbor to the west of this property has sent in about four-thirty this afternoon, so hopefully you received that. Staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions for staff at this point? Please state your name and address, if you would.
Caleb Cox with T-Mobile. Address is one-twenty-one West Election Road, Draper, Utah. Good evening, City Council. I guess Madam Mayor stepped out for a, a second, but, so yeah, as the staff report has said, T-Mobile has been trying to get a telecommunications tower in this area for several years. We've worked with the Planning Commission extensively to try to find the right place for it, and the, a member of the Planning Commission, a planner that's not in that department anymore, actually directed us to this location. Because of the way the zoning ordinances are written, it's, you know, it's difficult in a residential area. So this particular area is zoned, and it is a permitted use, and we are prepared to build and construct this tower, you know, with all the, all the qualifications needed for that permitted use. The tower we're proposing is going to be a slimline, meaning the antennas will be flush. It'll be sixty feet high, which is shorter than, you know, the, actually the telephone poles that run along Black Cat. So, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. All the setback and height requirements will be met. Other than that, I'm available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jordan.
Did you have discussions with the neighbor directly to the west about the tower?
I, I don't know if I have directly. He may have come to the neighborhood meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure who that would be, but I haven't, no, I don't think.
Mr. President, has the company that you're working for heard from him? Do you know if anyone else has had those conversations?
Not that I've, I work for T-Mobile. Not that I have known, we haven't been reached out to. We had a neighborhood meeting, and there was one of the residents that came by, and had some clarifying questions, but that was about it, as far as I know.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, we had some people signed up. Samantha LaPointe is against, and she would like to testify. If she would come forward. Please state your name and address.
My name is Samantha Pointe, sixty-one forty-five West Ekinobi Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-one-four. Thank you for letting me speak today. Dear City Council members, it's come to my attention just recently that my neighbor, the church there, is requesting a permit to install a T-Mobile cellular tower adjacent to a ten-acre property that I own. T-Mobile cellular tower adjacent to a ten-acre property that I own. I'm voicing my objection to this change in the development agreement for the following reasons. My property has a signed development agreement with the city, and it was for a twenty-acre residential project, and it had, at the time, an approved preliminary plat called Incline Village. I think there are about fifty-one lots that were on that Incline Village. Myself and three other property owners who make up the properties within Incline Village are in negotiations with a developer who is interested in purchasing that twenty acres and an additional, I think, four acres right next door to develop. And let's face it, cellular towers are maybe a necessity, but they're a bit of an eyesore, and none of us would really choose to live next to one if we had the choice. There is also a perception that there are unknown health risks associated with living near cellular towers, although undocumented, the perception still exists. If the cellular tower is approved, the developer's representative has stated that they would likely terminate their negotiations with us due to these concerns. Meridian's a family-centered city, and locating a cellular tower within a residential area with this density would seem to conflict with that objective. I and many people feel cellular towers belong in a non-residential area, and I think it is prudent, I believe it is prudent to postpone the approval of this tower, to consider how this tower might negatively affect the city's comprehensive plan for a quality, family-friendly neighborhood here, the development agreement goals, and how it might damage my and my property, excuse me, my and my neighbor's potential sale, our property values, and the marketability of our project should this tower be built or approved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay. Dr. Michael Pearson is for, but he don't want to testify. Want to testify, just Bill Lanson is for, but didn't want to testify. Ken Motley is for. Randy Rogers. Hudson Logan is for. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to testify on this item? Okay, come forward.
My name is Carrie Motley, and I live at eighteen seventeen North Tessa Avenue, Meridian. My backyard actually is with right across Black Cat from this proposed cell tower. As a neighbor, I don't oppose. I actually approve having this tower being built. It's been a known problem that T-Mobile's had poor service in that area, and with the growth of the community, I feel that it's important that they keep up with the communications of those who live in the area. I know, I am also, I have to say, I am also a T-Mobile customer, and I have terrible service in that area, and I would love to be able to have good service at an affordable cost for my family. We've looked at other options, and they cost more money. And so being able to stick with the current carrier and having better service would be a huge benefit. I don't feel that it would be an eyesore. We already have power lines directly behind our home running along Black Cat, so I do not feel it would impact any further, since we already have those power lines right behind our house.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, I do have... They've all... Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seeing none. Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I have a... Well, I guess the applicant will come back up anyway. I have a question for the applicant. Thank you. My question is about being an eyesore. That does seem to be somewhat of a... I know it's similar to a telephone pole, but it's a little bit more than that. Are there any other designs? I know, like, at Eagle Hills Golf Course, somebody put in a cell tower up there, and they made it look like a big tree. And so you, you know, are there any other designs or something that maybe doesn't just look like a big cell tower?
You know, it actually comes up a lot. And there are. And we do palm trees, and we do pine trees, and we do flagpoles and things. But I would say, you remember that tower, but you probably don't remember the others you passed by, you know, because you're like, oh, that's a funny-looking tree. So, I mean, yeah, there are. And we've had some cities have us paint them sky blue, thinking it would blend in. And to be honest, the raw gray, slim, it just kind of ends up blending into the skyline like a power pole would, or, you know, like anything else. I mean, but we do have that option, you know, if the city wanted to entertain that. But I think, you know, those fit a little better in areas with, you know, densely tall trees of the same height kind of thing. Palm trees actually work really well. That would probably look a little funny, but they work, you know, pretty well. But we can look at that, and we can perhaps bring up some renderings, but in my personal opinion, having just the same color as the power poles and everything else tends to be less noticeable in the long run.
Madam Mayor. So there was no other more non-residential area in this vicinity that you could find to place this? Because I tend to agree that it really shouldn't be. I wouldn't want it next to my house.
Right. And we've actually been looking a lot. The closest one we have is at our retail store in Meridian, like a shopping complex. But unfortunately, because it's such a densely populated residential area, I agree, nobody wants them there. Everyone wants them on the outsides, kind of pointing in. But the nature of the beast is it has become a necessity, a utility, just like almost anything else, just like a telephone service or electricity. And because, you know, they're getting so densely populated, these residential areas, we have to start putting them in, and we try to make them as, you know, as little invasive as we possibly can. You know, and the reason we picked this area is because it is a little more rural. But we've had a lot of complaints in this area from T-Mobile customers over the years. We've lost a lot of customers, and it, you know, and I sympathize for the individual that opposed this and her, the neighbors. But, you know, the more residential houses they're going to go in, as she pointed out, the more there will be a need for this. And unfortunately, we also have a responsibility to allow people to have emergency services, be able to call nine-one-one in basements and things like that. And when we're farther away, it penetrates less, and unfortunately, it's just kind of the nature of the way things are going with the industry.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Counsel, any additional information needed from the applicant or staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Quick question for staff. If approved, is the language for the modification broad to permit a wireless communication facility, or is it more narrowly tailored to fit what is the slimline design, which may be more narrow?
We can entertain that option. How it's written, as you see on the slide up here, is, right now, it says, "The following be the only allowed uses in the area churches." And that's it. And we've added their associated uses and wireless communication facilities. If you want to, you can tailor that to be more specific to a slimline tower, or however you'd like to do that. That's within your purview.
Madam Mayor, it seems appropriate, if it's possible, I guess, to ask the applicant. They might not care about having that restriction, but if that confirms and assures that the specific style and metrics of the tower as presented tonight, I don't know how you add that language to the end of that sentence.
Churches, their associated uses, and slimline wireless communication towers. Seems pretty straightforward.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Along those lines, another, I guess, another concern, if I was a neighbor, would be if this is just kind of general language, that what's going to stop another carrier from putting one on the other side, or, you know, right next door, where this all of a sudden becomes cell tower, Phil? So maybe even just limiting to one?
Madam Mayor, if I heard counsel with Mylum, it's a DA modification and associated uses with a single slimline wireless communication facility? That would be worth having the applicant at least nod affirmatively, or it sounds like he's okay.
Well, I'm sure T-Mobile would like to be the only one on it.
I think the zoning ordinances...
I need you to speak into the microphone.
I think the zoning ordinances take care of a lot of that for that location, and I don't think they can be as close together as that. Just the zoning ordinances might take care of that, but anyway.
Maybe Josh can comment to that.
Madam Mayor, I don't believe our zoning ordinance has a minimum distance between cellphone facilities. As you go around the city, you'll notice on the top of various buildings in town, there are multiple, not on towers, but there are wireless facilities that are constructed on top of taller buildings throughout town, and we don't have a minimum spacing between them. So...
But you probably won't see a number of cell towers in the same vicinity.
From, Madam Mayor, from my experience, what happens is they tend to co-locate, which means multiple carriers will use an existing pole and have their facilities on that. I'm not sure how T-Mobile does that necessarily, but I have seen that in the past. So there's not a whole reason to put five towers up when you've got one, and you can all just put your facilities on there. So...
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If there's not additional public comment, I would move we close the public hearing on item... Oh.
Counsel, I apologize. I had to step out. Would you like additional testimony?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I need to speak my name.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay. Samantha LaPointe. Again.
Thank you, Samantha.
Okay. A couple other considerations are what you guys are considering. There is also another church just adjacent to this church. If you allow a cellular tower on this church, would the church that's right adjacent then also have the right to install another cellular tower? And then we are talking about multiple towers in the area?
I would imagine they would have that same opportunity to come in for the same public hearings that this one would. So you would be notified if that were to happen.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify that.
No?
It's a principally permitted use. The only reason this applicant is having to come forward is their development agreement specifically only allows for churches and their associated uses, which with, we did not interpret a wireless communication facility would be an associated use for a church. So current ordinance allows for wireless communications facilities in the LO district.
In towers?
Correct.
Is it the possibility of even smaller, even, you know, height restriction on that? I know it's sixty feet seems like a lot, but...
You know, our ordinance does define where they're allowed and the specifics. That's easy for me to say. The specifics.
I guess that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha. And would the applicant have any additional comment? We always allow you the last word.
Come up a few times, sorry. Yeah, just in closing.
State your name again for the record.
Caleb Cox. My address, too. The pastor of the church actually just came spoke with me and said they would have the say if other carriers were to co-locate on that tower, and they're not interested in that. So I don't think a co-location on that tower, I don't think would be high enough for one, and I don't, as the ground owner, they wouldn't be interested in that. So I think, hopefully, that might help it rest a little easier. But other than that, yeah, it is a necessity. It's a necessary in our society. And unfortunately, with the more people that are moving into Meridian, seems like a terrific place, we need to be able to provide them emergency services and the utility of their phone. So are there any other questions?
Thank you. Anything further from counsel? Thank you. Okay, counsel, any further information needed from staff or the applicant, or any of those that provide testimony? If not, I would entertain a motion to close.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we close item eight E, H two thousand sixteen zero zero nine one.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item eight E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes motion carrying.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we approve item H two thousand sixteen zero zero nine one to allow the modification of the development agreement in Section five point one point one, to read that the following be the only allowed uses on the property, churches, their associated uses, comma, and a single slimline-designed wireless communication facility.
Motion and a second to approve item eight E as stated. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
All ayes motion carrying. Item eight F is a public hearing on H two thousand sixteen dash zero zero eight eight. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
This is an application for annexation and zoning and for preliminary plat. This site consists of approximately five point one five acres of land, which is currently zoned R U T in Ada County. It's located at thirty-eight seventy East Victory Road. The adjacent land is in zoning to the north, is a single-family residential property in the Sutherland Farms subdivision, which is zoned R four. To the east is single-family residential zone property zoned R U T, also in Ada County. To the south is East Victory Road and single-family residential property zoned R U T in Ada County. And to the west is also single-family residential property zoned R U T in Ada County. As I said, this is annexation, so there's no current history on this property. The future land map designation for this piece is medium-density residential. The applicant has applied for annexation and zoning, as I said, five point one five acres of land with an R four zoning district. Staff believes the proposed zoning and density is consistent with the vision of the comprehensive plan. The proposed plat consists of seventeen building lots and two common lots on five point one five acres of land. The R four zoning district is proposed for the development with a gross density of three point three dwelling units per acre, with an average lot size of nine thousand two hundred and eighteen square feet, which is consistent with the medium-density residential comprehensive plan designation. There is an existing single-family home on the site that will be demolished as part of this project, and the home must be removed prior to obtaining city engineer's signature on the final plat. The master street map, going back to the vicinity map here, as you can see, there is a large, what has been indicated as a roundabout. The master street map indicates a roundabout located at the intersection of South Terry Drive and East Victory Road. The highway district has indicated that they are in support of removing this from the master street map, but in order to do so, the applicant will need to request that from them, from the ACHD commission at a hearing to be scheduled at some date in the future. ACHD is requesting that the applicant construct South Proudway as one-half, and, sorry, for reference's sake, this is Proudway here, as one-half of a thirty-six-foot street section with curb gutter and five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk within fifty feet of right-of-way, plus twelve feet of additional pavement beyond the center line, and three-foot-wide gravel shoulder beyond the existing terminated roadway to the Proudway-Moon Dipper Street intersection. Sidewalks are required along all public streets. The applicant proposes to construct... plan that meets those standards. A 20-foot wide, 25-foot wide street buffer is required along East Victory Road, which is considered an arterial street, and is required to be landscaped in accord with the UDC. The buffer shown on the landscape plan meets the requirements. Because there is a single, there are single common lots, any fencing along said lots will have to be placed along the interior edge of the lot in accord with the UDC. Based on the area of the preliminary plat, which is approximately 5.15 acres, a minimum of 10% or in this case, .51 acres of qualified usable open space is required to be provided. Based on the preliminary plat, the applicant is proposing .53, which is approximately 10.2% of the proposed development as open space. The open space consists of eight-foot parkways and two passive open space lots that are at least 50 by 100, that include the required street buffer adjacent to Victory Road, so located here. Staff is concerned about the location of the proposed open space for the development. The majority of the proposed open space is adjacent to a busy arterial roadway that will be widened in the future and will become busier with future development in the area. The applicant is proposing what is essentially an extra-wide landscape buffer along East Victory Road. And the fencing requirements in the UDC require that fencing, as I said, be installed on the interior edge of the common lot, which would essentially be here. The proposal by the applicant will essentially require anyone who uses the open space to recreate along an arterial roadway. In addition to the open space provided for the development, the applicant requests this property be allowed to be included in the open space and site amenities calculations for the Sutherland Farms development. And it did not have an aerial, but this is a Sutherland Farms subdivision here, so they're proposing to, and the applicant's working with that HOA to be included within their HOA so that this property be included in their required open space as well as their amenities calculations. A total of 13.24 acres or 11.3% qualified open space has already been constructed within the Sutherland Farms development, along with the following site amenities: a three-quarter mile regional pathway along the Rydenbaugh Canal, a 5.9-acre park, a 2.5-acre park, tot lots, a gazebo, swing set, and horseshoe pits. The applicant has discussed incorporating the subject property, as I said, with their HOA, and the applicant may have made some progress since the planning commission. I have not spoken with him regarding this since then, so he may have some additional insight. The applicant is proposing to provide a future, what he's calling a future large amenity within the Sutherland Farms' existing 5.9-acre park. At this time, the applicant has not provided details of what that future large amenity would be. So because the applicant is proposing to be included in that Sutherland Farms HOA and be subject to their CCNRs, staff supports the applicant's request provided that the Sutherland Farms HOA agrees to allow this property to be incorporated, and if not, staff recommends that the plat is revised to provide the full 10% qualified open space and one site amenity on this subject property. If an agreement cannot be reached between the two parties, staff recommends that the applicant separate the landscape buffer and passive open space and include it open space somewhere else on the property so that it's more usable, so will create a more central open space. The applicant is proposing to construct detached single-family homes. The applicant has submitted conceptual sample elevations. I apologize, this is the overall Sutherland Farms subdivision, and just for references' sake, the applicant did something similar with the Bancroft Square subdivision, if you remember, and got that included within the Sutherland Farms subdivision recently, and that's what they're proposing to do here. As I said, there are some sample elevations that were submitted by the applicant. Written testimony since the commission hearing is from the applicant, Matt Schultz. The commission did recommend approval. At the summary of the commission public hearing, Matt Schultz, the applicant's representative, was in favor. There was none in opposition. William Baller commented. Written testimony, as I said, was received from the applicant. I presented that application. Bill Parsons also commented. Key issues of public testimony were the location of sewer and water as it relates to this development. Key issues of discussion by the commission were amenities for the development if included in the Sutherland Farms HOA, as well as amenities if not included in the Sutherland Farms HOA, and location of the open space might not be appropriate. Commission changes to the staff recommendations are they modify the condition 1.1.1(c) as follows: if an agreement cannot be reached with the Sutherland Farms Homeowners Association to allow the subject property to be incorporated into the Sutherland Farms HOA, that prior to submitting a final plat application, the applicant shall separate the landscape buffer from the passive open space, which is Lot 1, Block 1, and Lot 7, Block 3, and create a more central open space lot and include one site amenity in accord with the standards of the UDC. There are no outstanding issues for City Council, and they did recommend approval, as I said. Stand for any questions you have.
Josh? Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Okay, would the applicant like to make a comment? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Tammy. Counsel, Matt Schultz, 8421 South 10 Mile in Meridian. Here on behalf of Schultz Development, we've endeavored to do something similar to Bancroft Square, if you remember, which is right around the corner on Eagle Road, with the exception that we felt that this location was more appropriate to be R4 instead of R8. So whereas, you know, just right out of the gates, we thought that was the best thing to do, to blend in with the neighborhood. This big, this overall picture that you're showing right here, I prepared, went and measured everything, came up with the open space, and yeah, we do meet the open space on our own at 10%. What we're asking for is we'd like to do an extra-wide buffer on the road that does count in your ordinance towards qualified open space. People are going to recreate the big park in Sutherland Farm, which is very close. It's within 800 feet. It's closer to our subdivision than a lot of people that live in Sutherland Farm. Now, we would like to recreate in there with their full approval as being part of their HOA, paying dues, being subject to their ACC guidelines as to what gets built, and we're offering all that control to them and to pay close to $10,000 towards a larger amenity of the park that would use the Bancroft Square money, what Berkeley Homes is doing, use our money, use some of the other 200 and something residences' money to do something bigger. As it stands today, they already have enough amenities in the overall subdivision to exceed your current ordinance, even though it was done 10 years ago with the big pond that stocked the fish in the middle, the regional pathway, and the amenities that are in there. It's a great, it's a great open space. It's centrally located. We would contribute to that. The way Bancroft Square worked was, prior to submitting the final plat, we had to have that agreement in place, and that all happened. It all came. We're still working through ours. Everything's positive so far. It just takes a while for those wheels to turn when you're dealing with that many residents to take it to a vote and all that, and so we'd like to have this approval in place, subject to getting their approval, and if we can't get that approval, then our final plat won't be able to be submitted like we've submitted it here. We'd have to move our open space, a couple lots in, and put, you know, I don't know if it's a little playground or a little gazebo or some amenity. We're right on the edge of needing an amenity, 4.99 acres. We wouldn't need one. We're at 5.1. Anything between 5 and 20 needs one amenity. We're right there on the edge. We'd rather contribute to a bigger amenity in the park. Good connectivity. It's a pretty simple layout in terms of we have to line up with Terry across Victory. We have to line up connecting to Sutherland Farm. We have to provide connections to the east and west. It is what it is. We decided to go with the deeper lots. Most of these lots are deeper than Sutherland Farm, they're not as wide, but they do meet that 8,000 minimum in the R4, which is considered a larger lot in the city of Meridian, which we were going for. It'll allow three-car garage. We want to, like I said, hand over the architectural control to their ACC board and do something that blends in with them, and we just want to be one big happy neighborhood. So with that, we stand for any questions and ask that you approve it with staff conditions that we agree with. Thank you.
So Matt, do you have the agreement with the Sutherland Farms HOA?
We presented one, we presented an agreement for them to sign that outlines the contribution, the fact that we give them control, you know, all those things, and it hasn't been signed yet, but that'll be, after this approval, that'll be a condition of being able to submit a final plat is having that agreement in place. It just takes time for that to work through. Bancroft Square, that just got done, and that plat was approved a couple months ago, so it's going to probably lag a month or two behind to get through the process of dealing with those many homeowners. All have to vote, and they have to vote it, they have to concur with a 66% supermajority. So it's a high bar that we're going to be, we think we're going to hit it. Like I said, we're doing big lots, we're giving them control, we're giving them money. Let's just be one big happy family, so it's going to take time, though. So in the meantime, we're just going to take our approval forward to the board and say, this is what got approved, would you please accept this? And they'll take it to a vote. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you. There were several that did sign up. If, when I call your name, you would like to provide testimony, please step forward. Donna Reese signed up against. Mike Devine signed up as neutral or for?
I have a question, ma'am.
I would need you to come forward, please. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
It's Mike Devine. I'm 3730 East McKay Drive. I just live kind of at the intersection where they're talking about poking, I guess, Proud through and connecting to Sutherland Farms. If they do, go ahead, and if Sutherland Farm does approve all of this, who would we talk to, or I guess maybe it's a development issue or a city issue or what have you, but that area, that intersection, there's already quite a bit of traffic that comes, I guess it'd be west to east coming down McKay where it would join in with the new property. If there would possibly be a way to put like some kind of a stop sign, either just to, I guess, do I have a way to show you on this map where I'm talking about, or following their plat going from west to east?
Yeah, right where the arrow is. Where the cursor is.
Correct, right, yeah. I just live, I guess, kitty-corner to that, and that road going west to east is McKay, and there already is problems with a bunch of teenage drivers kind of just ripping through there, and then they turn and go north up Proud. If that development were to go through, which I'm in favor of, I'm not in favor of, I think the development's great, but that's going to give, you know, access from people from going down Victory to turn and go north up through our subdivision. We sat here months ago and talked about the Bancroft Square, and we were worried about people coming out of there and, you know, cutting through our neighborhood to head east and get back out to Victory. This is just kind of giving another avenue for people to come from Victory through our subdivision and even cut over to Eagle Road. So who would we talk to about putting, like possibly even just putting a stop sign just to, just to slow traffic down at that internal intersection?
That guy.
You?
Justin is with ACHD, and I don't know if that can, because it's not on this particular plat, it would need to be in that subdivision. ACHD doesn't have a process of doing that, but maybe Justin can talk with you offline, or we can ask him to come up and outline what that process is.
Sure. Something as simple as that, just to deter people from ripping through there, because it already happens within the subdivision, and that just gives them another avenue to do it, and that really, that's the only concern that I have. I mean, I'm all for development in that area. I would even buy a lot in that area, but living where we live, I mean, it happens all the time, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, but that's what I was, that's the question that I had, and I was just curious about, if it were to go through and were to get approved from Sutherland Farm, who would we talk to about possibly putting in a stop sign there?
Well, and actually, that would be, makes sense with the north-south as more of a through road.
It's fully valid, sure.
But we don't do roads, so we'd love to pass the buck to ACHD.
Okay.
We'll ask him to comment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Brian Barker signed up as neutral and for.
Yes.
And Ginny Staples as well. Thank you. Okay, Justin, can you make comment on the last request on the stop sign? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Justin Lucas. I'm here representing the Ada County Highway District, and the business address is 3775 Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho.
Thank you.
I can't speak specifically to this location. Obviously, this is a developing area, and when this does go through, it is certainly possible a stop sign would be an appropriate solution for that intersection. It's not uncommon for, in areas like this where the streets are kind of built as we go, for ACHD to come in and retroactively install stop signs. We have a policy related to this, not only stop signs, but also a traffic calming policy, and the way to get that initiated is through contacting Ada County Highway District. We have a very easy interface and respond to these types of requests relatively quickly. There is some science behind the placement of stop signs, and a stop sign alone, it's been proven that if it's located in a place where it's not warranted, where the traffic or geometry or whatever doesn't warrant it, that it doesn't do anything. So I'm not going to promise we're going to put a stop sign anywhere without the analysis that is required through our, through our policy, but that being said, we do have a clear process to do that analysis. We respond, we do, we go out and do traffic counts and monitoring and all those kinds of things before we make those decisions, but it's hard in this situation because the street isn't there yet. Typically, I'm talking about streets that are there. This one, it's not there. When it does go in, I think the point the gentleman made is good, and it's likely we would be able to do an analysis and provide him an answer at that time.
Okay. If you'll give him your contact information after this, that would be awesome.
Certainly, certainly can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Justin. And we have it as well, so. Any other public testimony on this item? Okay, any other comment?
No, I don't think so, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
CNN and I move we close the public hearing on H 2016-0088.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to close public hearing on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve H 2016-0088 and to include all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
Is that with the, if he gets in that HOA?
Pardon?
Pending the HOA, which was part of the statement. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item 8F. Any discussion? The clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 8G is public hearing on H 2016-0089. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an application for a preliminary plat. The site consists of approximately 20.18 acres of land, which is currently zoned R4, located at 2180 East Amity Road. To the north of this property, we have residential properties in the Bellingham Park subdivision, which is zoned R8. To the east, we have rural residential or agricultural property zoned RUT within Ada County. To the south, we have East Amity Road and rural residential or agricultural property zoned RUT, also within Ada County. And to the west, we have single-family residential properties in the Estancia subdivision, which is zoned R4. In 2006, this property was granted annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat for 62 single-family lots and nine common lots on 20.18 acres of land in the R8 zoning district for what was called residential or agricultural properties zoned RUT also within Ada County. And to the west, we have single-family residential properties in the Estancia subdivision, which is zoned R4. In 2006, this property was granted annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat for 62 single-family lots and nine common lots on 20.18 acres of land in the R8 zoning district for what was called Cotswold Village. And in 2008, the property was granted final plat approval of, for 19 single-family residential lots and seven common lots on 6.78 acres of land in the R8 zoning district. And the plat was subsequently, has subsequently expired. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this property is low-density residential. The, this proposed plat consists of 75 single-family residential building lots and six common lots. And the plat is proposed to develop in two phases. As you can see here, the phasing line runs approximately where my cursor is here. So as I said, the property is designated low-density residential on the comprehensive plan, future land use map. Low-density residential areas are anticipated to contain single-family residences at densities up to three dwelling units per acre. The proposed preliminary plat includes 75 residential building lots on 20.18 acres of land for a gross density of 3.72 dwelling units per acre. The gross density is slightly above density outlined in the comprehensive plan, but it comports with the maximum density requirements of the R4 district. The average lot size within the development is 8,408 square feet. The applicant indicated in the application that the minimum home size for the development would be 1,200 square feet. However, the zoning designation they're asking for requires for a minimum of 1,400 square feet. There is an existing home and outbuildings on this site. The home is proposed to be removed. Development of the site is required to comply with the dimension standards set forth in the UDC for the R4 district. And staff has reviewed the proposed plat and found it to be in compliance with those standards. The Highway District did not require a traffic impact study for this development. Access to the site is currently provided via East Amity Road, which is considered an arterial street. This access will be terminated with the development of the proposed subdivision. The plat is submitted, does not, has not depict direct lot access in accord with the UDC. Access is proposed from South Rangewood Way on the north and East Melwood Street on the east, which are both considered local residential streets. The Ada County Highway District in an email received on August 17th indicated that there is potential to allow for construction access to enter the site from Amity. The applicant has worked with ACHD and has some additional information to share in that regard. I'll let the applicant discuss that as, as part of his presentation. East Melwood Street and South Rangewood Way are stubbed to this site. The applicant is proposing to stub to the property to the east as well. And staff is supportive of the street layout proposed for the development. A 25-foot wide street landscape buffer, which is measured from the back of curb, is required along East Amity Road. Which is considered a residential arterial street per the UDC and shall be landscaped in accord with the standards also set forth in the UDC. The applicant is proposing a 35, plus or minus 35-foot wide landscape buffer adjacent to East Amity Road. A 10-foot wide compacted gravel shoulder meeting the construction standards of the Transportation Authority and landscaping, which is either lawn or other vegetative ground cover is required along East Amity Road. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required to be provided for this development based on the area of the preliminary plat, which is approximately 20.18 acres. A minimum of 2.01 acres of qualified open space is required to be provided as set forth in the UDC. A total of 10.01% of qualified open space is proposed, consisting of half the street buffer along East Amity Road, a micro path lot, a drainage lot, and internal common open space. The applicant proposes to provide a tot lot within the central common area located at Lot 16, Block 2. So if you look at the landscape plan, and if I can find my cursor, in this location here. And as I said, we've worked with the applicant and I apologize, but this isn't actually what they're proposing. They're proposing this pathway here and this will actually be a street connection because we had some issues with their block lengths on the south here, which we've since resolved. Sidewalks are required along all public streets and a minimum of five-foot wide detached sidewalk is required along East Amity Road as depicted in the landscape plan. Because homes on lots that back up to East Amity Road will be highly visible, staff recommends the rear or sides of those structures that face East Amity Road incorporate articulation through changes in material, color, modulation, and architectural elements to break up those monotonous wall planes and roof lines. Staff did receive some additional testimony since the commission hearing from Jerry Tebel, Amy Schinsel, and also from Ross Erickson, the applicant's representative. Brief summary of the commissioned public hearing. The applicant's representative, Ross Erickson, was in favor. There was, several commented and were in opposition were Crystal Dickerson, Amy Schinsel, Jared Perry, John Walker, Earl Griffin, Calorset Amos, Annie Moore, Michael Thompson, Peter Thompson, Laura Dahl, Russ Damian. Written testimony was received from Ross Erickson. I represented the staff in this presentation. Bill Parsons and Ted Baird also commented on the application. Key issues of public testimony were the lack of direct access to Amity Road, safety of children on Wrightwood Drive with the increased traffic from the proposed development, concerns over lack of amenities, why a traffic impact study was not required for the proposed development, where construction traffic will be directed, public notification, or feelings that the public notification was inadequate based on the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods, timing of a construction entrance off of Amity Road. Key issues of discussion by the commission were traffic on Wrightwood and the speed of cars on that road. Direct access to Amity Road will be from the parcel to the east once it develops. Additional homes might make Wrightwood eligible for some traffic calming measures, designated signs that require construction to use a construction entrance off of Amity Road, timing of the removal of a construction entrance, and who would use the entrance. There were several changes to the conditions from the commission. First is the added condition 1.1.8 as follows, that pending the approval of Ada County Highway District, the signs saying, quote, "No construction traffic" be placed at the corner of Locust Grove and Wrightwood, at the dead end of Rangewood, and at the entrance to Estancia off of Amity Road. Add condition 1.1.9 as follows, pending approval of Ada County Highway District, a temporary construction access shall be built off of Amity Road and that all construction vehicles shall use the temporary construction access. Add condition 1.1.10 to read as follows, a landscape surety shall be put in place for removal of the construction entrance and the temporary construction entrance shall be removed prior to signature on the final plat for Phase 2 of the proposed development. Add condition 1.1.11 to read as follows, prior to the city council hearing, the applicant shall provide details of the location of the temporary access as well as have final information from the Highway District as far as any conditions for use of the temporary access. So in that regard, the applicant did provide staff with proposed locations of signs referencing construction traffic only, as well as a location for a proposed temporary direct access to Amity Road. With that, the commission did recommend approval. And I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions?
I haven't yet, this time.
Okay, see Africa. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers Ross Erickson, 6213 North Cloverdale Road, Boise. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. First off, Josh, thanks for the thorough staff report and all of your efforts to get us to this point. As Josh mentioned, we're here to request approval of a preliminary plat for 6, or 75, single-family detached building units on a parcel just over 20 acres that's currently zoned R4. We feel it's compatible with the surrounding areas. Directly to the west is the Estancia sub that's also zoned R4. To the north is Bellingham, which is zoned R8. To the northeast is Messina Meadows, which is also zoned R8. And to the, directly to the east is a vacant parcel that's still in the county, that's RUT. And to the east of that parcel, there's a parcel zoned R8. So from the bird's eye, we're basically an R4 parcel surrounded by R8s and R4s, so we think it's a good fit for this proposed development with regards to density and use. The access for the site was basically predetermined by the adjacent developments through Bellingham and through Estancia. Estancia provided the Melwood Stub Street to the west property boundary and Bellingham provided the Rangewood Stub Street to the north property. So basically, our layout utilizes those two stub streets for our internal network of streets. Then we also provide a stub street to the west to provide access to the undeveloped parcel to the east. We do not provide direct access to Amity nor would it be approved by ACHD in accordance with their policy due to the successive driveway spacing from the approach to the west that goes into Estancia to the north. And then there's another approach to Amity Road to the east that goes to White Bark. There's about 1,200 feet between those two driveways and they require 660 feet of successive spacing between driveways to get it approved. So it physically wouldn't fit to try to get another access to this property directly to Amity, nor do we think it makes sense, simply because we are providing a stub street to the east and the next property over to the east, when it develops, would have the ability to construct a driveway that aligns with the approach for White Bark, which will provide another access out to Amity Road for the Paisley Meadows development. The internal streets are 34-foot wide. Will accommodate parking on both sides. We're proposing eight-foot planter strips, parkways. That'll be landscaped with trees, sprinklers and grass. The development includes just over 10% open space in accordance with the city's code. At the northeast corner of the project, we have a detention pond for stormwater. That's actually the low point of the site, so it makes sense to put it there. The, the area around the detention pond will be landscaped to the extent ACHD will permit. There's some spacing requirements for trees and things, but we can do, we have some flexibility with grass and shrubs, so we are goal to dress it up so it looks nice. Essentially located at the project is more of a park-type setting for our open space. That location will include a tot lot, some benches for a sitting area, and then also like a pet station that will include some bags and a refuse for disposal. And we've also got, this landscape plan isn't quite accurate. As Josh suggested, the pedestrian connection on the west side is actually a through street now, but we do have a mid-block pedestrian connection for access, right where the cursor is. And then also, we provide two pedestrian connections off the terminus of the bulbs at the southerly portion of Phase 2. We provided a 37-foot landscape buffer along Amity Road. A 25-foot buffer is required. We think it's, it's a good measure just to provide a little bit more separation from those homes to the arterial roadway. It also improved the streetscape, I guess, looking in. The utilities are readily available to the site. We've got water and sewer on three sides, the northwest and the south, so the site's easily serviceable. Our plan is to bring sewer from the south, run it through the internal streets, and provide a stub to the east for that parcel for future development. Same goes with water. We'll connect on the northwest and the south and provide a stub to the east. The, the construction traffic issue came up at the planning and zoning meeting. It was kind of a, an item that we, I couldn't quite address because we didn't have enough information. We didn't ask the right questions to ACHD in time, so we since had to go back and follow up with them to develop the temporary access plan that you see on the screen right now. Basically, what this plan shows is it shows a temporary gravel access road from the southerly boundary of Phase 2 that connects directly out to Amity Road. This access will be limited to construction traffic only, and that will include all the folks working on the home construction within Phase 1. It will include the trades, the roofers, the painters, all the guys with their trucks or cars or vehicles coming to work on those homes. And it's the intent in providing this road that, you know, we can get those folks to actually use that access and not go through the local streets and burden them with undue construction traffic, since the neighbors are really concerned about that. The signage proposal is actually included on this plan. The condition of approval that was included in the staff report is a little bit different from what we're showing here. It was drafted prior to us working out the details with ACHD. So what we'd like to do is have a proposal. I sent Josh an email with some suggested language to change that condition to align with our proposed temporary access plan with regards to some of these items. So do you guys want me to read those proposed modifications into the record? Josh, you want me to do that? Okay. So the commission added condition 1.1.8 and basically to back up, they wanted the no-construction-traffic signs posted out on Amity and then also out on Locust Grove. After a meeting with ACHD, we didn't think that was quite the right location for those signs. We thought it would be better to put it at the boundary of the project so it was clear as far as what traffic we're trying to control, and that is the project coming to and from the Paisley Meadows development. So I propose that condition 1.1.8 be modified to read, pending the approval of ACHD, that signs saying "No construction access permitted" be placed along East Melwood Street and South Rangewood Way at the subdivision boundary. And that's exactly what's shown on this plan here. The second modification would be to condition 1.1.10. There was narrative in there with regards to a landscape surety, and it's really unnecessary to have that in the condition simply because this temporary access would remain in place until probably about halfway through the infrastructure construction of Phase 2. Once we get to about halfway through the infrastructure construction of Phase 2, it's gonna be a safety hazard to have people driving through there. We're gonna be cutting roads in, putting road base down and prepping for concrete. So we would anticipate that the temporary access would be removed at the point in time when we have to start prepping for the road and for the concrete for Phase 2. So basically, what I did is I struck this portion from the condition. A landscape surety shall be put into place for removal of the construction entrance and, basically, I crossed that part. I don't know if that makes sense with just reading that fragment, but the remaining portion that would still be in effect would read like this. The temporary construction entrance shall be removed prior to signature on the final plat of Phase 2 of the proposed development. A little more understandable. And Josh has this email. He has these in writing. I don't know if you guys would like a copy of those or not, but... So that pretty much sums it up. With that, we'll ask for your approval tonight and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any? Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Um, so there seems to be a lot of contention about traffic. Was getting direct access to Amity Road something that you tried to do? Did you ask them? Is that ever part of the plan?
Madam Mayor, councilman, is it Mylum?
Yeah.
No, we didn't propose it because it doesn't meet policy. So we went in and met with the Highway District. Looking at the overall plan, it's pretty clear that the parcel to the east will have an access to Amity that will align with White Bark. And it just, it seems from a planning perspective to be a much more suitable location for the access. So, so given the fact that access on the parcel to the east will align with White Bark, ACHD policy won't allow it due to successive driveway spacing on our project. It just makes sense to put it on the parcel to the east to align with White Bark.
Madam Mayor, na, ta vi. It also, our policy is a minimum of 1,400 square feet, not 1,200 square feet, but you're asking us. So I'm just, you know, like, it would, it would just be a lot, it would be a lot less issues with your neighbors. And maybe then they would say, no, it doesn't work, and, and then you go on from there. But I'm just, I was curious.
Madam Mayor, councilman Mylum, we are actually, we put the 1,200 square foot on the application error. 1,400 square foot minimum is fine for what we're proposing to do. I forgot to mention that, but thanks for, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But with regards to the, to the driveway spacing, one of the comprehensive plan goals is to minimize driveway access to arterial streets. So, I mean, that's taking everything in and kinda thinking about what makes sense for this area with the parcel being undeveloped to the east. I think from a planning perspective, it makes sense for how we're approaching this. And we did talk to ACHD about a direct access and they said that it doesn't meet their policy for spacing.
Thank you.
So Josh, can you show how, how you don't overlay it?
Absolutely. This doesn't have White Bark subdivision on there. This must be an old aerial photograph, but we'll go back to my, let me go back to my PowerPoint and I can show you where, I believe the vicinity map will show. So if you look, this is the White Bark subdivision here. So the road lines up, or...
It's further over.
With this east property to the east. Let me pull the aerial back over so you can kinda see what we're talking about. So it's approximately in this location where the White Bark access to Amity Road is. And my understanding is that it makes sense to line up the accesses so you're not offsetting multiple access points. And again, it doesn't meet the separation standards. I know Mr. Lucas is here and can kind of explain the Highway District's reasoning for that, but that's my understanding is that what they proposed, future access to Amity in approximately this location, it didn't make sense to have another one here with the intent is to limit those direct access points to Amity Road.
So its access is on Melwood Street?
So Melwood is this street here that runs east-west, so that would be in access to the subdivision as well as to Rangewood here, which brings it out to Locust Grove.
So that cul-de-sac is a through street?
It is.
That's correct.
And the least stub street.
Counsel, any other questions at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'd like to hear Josh's response to the requested removal of the surety portion of 1.1. of 1.1.10. Give us the other side of what could occur.
Sure. So the discussion at planning and zoning was some way of trying to get the applicant to, because typically we require the landscape improvements along the, along the street with the first phase, right? If you're going to put a construction entrance through that, he's obviously not going to build that portion of it. So I think the thought was to get some money so that when that is removed, we've got some surety or some, some way of enforcing that that gets constructed with the removal of the access. I don't know that we necessarily need to do that. Maybe Mr. Narick can elaborate a little bit more on that, but my perspective, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense we're going to require that they do that. There's going to be a surety for this typically anyway? So I guess that's my two cents.
Madam Mayor, I didn't catch the last part. You're not sure why it's, why we would require the surety?
A surety in addition to what we would already require.
Right. Wasn't that our, was that our language initially, though? The addition of, the language that Ross wanted stricken?
Was language from planning and zoning. Added that language. Yeah, staff didn't add that language. It was something that was discussed at the planning and zoning.
Okay.
I can clarify that just one more time for you, Councilman Borton, if you'd like. Because the driveway approach, or excuse me, because the temporary access road is going to be removed probably halfway through the Phase Two infrastructure construction, it's kind of a moot point. What's the point of putting the surety language in there if it's going to be removed and you're going to construct your landscaping for Phase Two along the furniture along with Amity Road widening? It doesn't make any sense. I mean, you can leave it in there, but it's just extra, extra language that doesn't really mean anything. It's kind of out of place.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
I had several people sign up, and hopefully we didn't chase them off because of the lateness. But Tolan Whitlock signed up against, Mejo, Meso, I don't know. Whitlock also signed up against. Nichelle Sorensen signed up against, as well as neutral. Christian Sorensen, same. And John Walker. Signed as neutral. Thank you for sticking with us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
John Walker, 4592 South Glenmere Way, Meridian, Idaho. Madam Mayor, council members, appreciate this time. I sit on the board for the HOA for Estancia. We've had a lot of banter on this project, if you will, from our neighborhood as well as the neighbors to the north, Bellingham Estates. And I just have a few questions that I would like clarified as well as our board, and a couple of them are also solutions too. So it's a question, a solution posed in the form of a question, if you will. But the first question is, the roads through Estancia, and this is more probably a question for Justin at ACHD, you know, were these roads designed for this type of traffic? They're proposing 75 homes. Originally, it was 62 or so. You know, 75 homes on average, two cars per homes on two trips per day, that's 300 trips through the new neighborhood. So that's one of the big concerns of the neighbors in my neighborhood. Again, I'm neutral to the situation here. I do promote development in the area. It helps with home values. It helps bring good quality people into our towns. But I do have concern for safety for the kids in my neighborhood as long as my own, seeing as how, about where Josh's cursor is, is where my house is on that corner. That is Melwood, which is proposed entrance to the new neighborhood, which isn't even a through street from Amity. So to use that, you know, people would actually have to come in, can I write on this?
Select a color at the very top. There's the top of the, there's a button.
Sorry.
Oh.
So those would be the three main entrances to get into the new subdivision. Again, that's the concern. So where the roads meant for the type of traffic that's going to be used in these roadways, Wrightwood on the north side there, that's already being used by two different subdivisions. Some would argue three, because up in here, there are new homes that are already there. So again, traffic. My second question is, and this is more posing a solution, could this project wait until the new road from White Bark, what that, I think that land there has to be annexed into Meridian, but would that be a possible solution? Why put three different neighborhoods at unrest when we could just hold off on a project until the roadways are there to meet the needs of the neighborhood? And finally, even if the project is approved, what kind of traffic controls could be put in place? You know, speed bumps through these neighborhoods. A lot of, you know, community members have already stated about people speeding through the neighborhood, mainly on Wrightwood, but also through down Glenmere Way. So those are big concerns that I'm seeing from my fellow neighbors. Again, you know, I'm not opposed to the, to the homes going in. I think it's a good thing for the city. But, you know, there are much larger neighborhoods such as Tuscany right to the north of us that have hundreds of homes. You know, we're only talking, we're dealing with a few hundred homes right here in my two neighborhoods. But they have, you know, residential collector streets. So vehicles that are traveling on actual residential, pure residential roads where homes and children are is minimal because it kicks them out on these residential collector streets that then kicks them out on the arterial roadways. So there's not so many people playing on those, and we don't have those in our particular situation. So, you know, with that, I would hope Ross will be able to answer some of those questions. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to come up and have, if I have any more questions after he comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. So Justin, you're earning your keep tonight. We do appreciate you being here.
I have attended many of these meetings, and I always find it enjoyable. So I do. It's, you know, kind of a weird thing, but I enjoy these, the public process. My name is Justin Lucas. I represent the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adams Street, Garden City, Idaho. As you are aware, you know, ACHD provides a written staff report on the applications for development, and I would always guide you to that staff report because that is ACHD's official comment on any application. I can try to add some thoughts behind why, number one, we do not want an access to Amity Road through the subdivision, and we would prefer it line up in the future with that White Bark access. I think Ross touched on this a little bit, but the idea behind that is safety. When you have offset streets across the street from each other, and they're just a little bit offset, it's the left turn movement that'll get you. Because the left, the people turning left, if they're lined up and can see each other across the way, then they have a better chance of not running into each other. So if they're offset a little bit, and they turn into that center lane, and they, when they see the person is when they're looking straight at them in the center lane. So that's the primary reason behind why we are so concerned with intersection offset. The second concern brought up by the HOA board member was about the volume of traffic going through these streets. I don't, I looked at the staff report. I don't have all the numbers for the volumes on these streets, but based on my experience, I'm 99% positive that the volumes on these local roadways do not exceed ACHD standards. You can see here Eagle, Amity, and Locust Grove. Typically, we call out the major streets, and we only call out the minor streets if there's an issue. And so here, where there's these low-volume local streets, there was no issue identified. I understand the concern of each different subdivision, being concerned about a new subdivision passing through those roads, but that is very typical. It happens all the time, and the roads are public. There's not, they don't belong to any specific subdivision unless they're private streets. So public roads are meant for the use of the public regardless of the subdivision that you, that you live in. Looking at this area, it's likely that if this developed all as one subdivision, it would have a very similar street layout, and the accesses to Amity and Locust Grove would be basically what was presented. And so I don't know if that helps solve all those issues, but certainly if, after this development goes in and there is a problem on one of these roads, once again, you can contact the Highway District. There are traffic calming policies that, speed bumps, whatever they may be. It's surprising, though, how many people don't want speed bumps when we actually go out and talk to the neighborhoods. And so it's interesting how that plays out through traffic calming. So that said, I don't know if I clearly answered every question, but I hope I addressed the major concerns.
Counsel, any questions for Justin?
Thank you, Justin.
I think you addressed the overarching concerns.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further testimony? Thank you for being here. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nichelle Sorensen, and I live at 1915 East Melwood Street. We, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. We just purchased our home in June, and we have five small children. Well, my oldest probably isn't so small, but we have five children, and one of the biggest selling points for our home was how quiet the neighborhood was and how it felt calm. We felt safe with our children being on this, being able to go out and play. We live right across the street from the park in Estancia, and we live about 200 feet from where the subdivisions will join. And I feel, I'm not opposed to the development. I am opposed to the way that the traffic wants to be handled. I understand wanting the Amity entrances to line up at the White Bark entrance there, but I would agree with possibly holding off on the project until we can get that White Bark entrance there. We do have a lot of subdivisions in that area. It's not just the two subdivisions. There's a whole lot of the subdivisions that do interlink, and there are no streets except for the ones that drive all along the houses. And there are cars that go through there quickly already. If you add another 75 homes, there will be a lot more cars that go through there quickly, and not just by the houses, but close to the park where the kids do play. I feel that this causes increased risks to our children, and not just to my children, but to all of the children in the neighborhood, both in Estancia and in Bellingham Park, and the other neighborhood that has just gone back in around Rangewood. I would ask that we wait on this project until the White Bark entrance can be constructed to help keep traffic at safe levels for our children in the neighborhoods. I know that the development needs to happen. I get that. But I am concerned that there was no traffic study completed on this because it is going to impact traffic greatly in those neighborhoods. And I don't want to have to wait for a problem to occur before we address the issues that we can already see that are coming. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Would the applicant like to respond?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ross Erickson again, representing the applicant. Thank you, Justin, for your testimony and clarification on the traffic issues. I don't have too much to add there other than, I agree, I didn't see anything in the ACHD staff report that said that there's any undue burden on any of the adjacent local streets that will service this project. We think the right thing is to align the future access to Amity with the White Bark access, and that's why our proposal is as it is. So I really don't have much more to add unless you guys have any additional questions for me.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
We don't even have an application on the neighboring property, right? So that could be 10 years out. I mean, we don't, there's nothing, we don't know. There's nothing planned right there.
We've had some interest over the, over the recent years, but currently, there's no application.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any questions for staff, the applicant, or any of the neighbors?
Your unmayor, I move we close the public hearing on H.2016-0089.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 8G. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Statement first. While I sympathize with the subdivisions that's already there, I think if we would look back through the minutes when their subdivision was, application was here, we had people from Tuscany and stuff testifying that they were going to bring too much traffic through their subdivisions and stuff on Locust Grove. So while we want all our roads to be safe and stuff, I personally think that this developer, he showed his thoughtfulness by going to an R4, getting larger lots, less houses, and I appreciate that. And with that, if we have no more discussion, I move that we approve H.2016-0089, and to include all applicant, staff, and public comment.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item 8H, I mean 8G, sorry. I would just say that I understand the concern too, and the, probably the local collector just north of that will probably be the main route out. But the developer didn't do less density. It was actually low density. It's exceeding the three per acre in low density. So just wanted to make sure that that was noted. They did adhere to the minimum square footage for the low-density, however. Any discussion from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm a discussion. I just had a comment too, because I do sympathize with you guys. We just approved a 200-home subdivision across from my subdivision that's going to drive all that traffic right down my street, taking our kids to school. So I feel the pain. Unfortunately, we can't make emotional decisions like that. So if you use facts and findings.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 8H is a public hearing for H.2016-0093. I will ask for staff comments as I open the public hearing. I will ask for staff comments as I open the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Thanks for sticking with us.
You guys give me two weeks in a row. Good evening. I'm here to present and review an application for a city-initiated annexation. Last year, city council approved a small budget for, for the city-initiated project. Part of this was a request to, in direction for staff to clean up enclaves, and the other was to close the loop on a 2005 agreement for services and annexation. That agreement allowed the Black Rock subdivision to develop in the county with city services, even though it was not contiguous at the time. This application is for a category A annexation. All of these properties are now contiguous with the city, and they have all provided some type of consent. These properties include six Ada County Highway District properties, one city meridian property, three Idaho Power properties, and the Black Rock subdivision. ACHD has indicated they will not contest annexation. Idaho Powers provided signed consent for their agreements. The city of Meridian wishes for its property to be part of the city. The Black Rock subdivision was allowed to develop in the county with city services under an agreement that it would be annexed when it became contiguous with city limits. This agreement was recorded with the county, memorialized in individual titles, and referenced in their CCNRs. With the Sky Mesa development, Black Rock became contiguous to the city. Black Rock is also contiguous to the southwest, and now is part of the South Meridian annexation. This area is developing to the north, east, and south, including schools, residential, regional park, YMCA, and others. Total acreage for this annexation is approximately 67 acres. Line uses for these properties include low-density residential, medium-density residential, mixed-use commercial, commercial, and civic. Proposed zoning for these properties are consistent with the future line use map and include 53 acres of R4, 11 acres of R8, and 2.6 acres of CC. For the ACHD, Idaho Power, and city of Meridian, there are no real impacts as a result of this annexation. While there may be some opportunities for expansion on some of these properties, the Idaho Power and ACHD sites are all existing stormwater, or for the most part, existing stormwater or power substations. The city of Meridian's property is a small strip of land used to connect, a pathway connection between Harrows Park and 10 Mile Road. In terms of service and assessment impacts, utility roads, schools, and services remain unchanged. Fire service will remain the same, since Meridian Fire provides the rural fire service. There are, however, there will, however, no longer be an assessed tax value for the fire district. Trash service will remain with Republic, but there are some differences between the city account and the county account. Police services will now be Meridian police instead of the Ada County sheriffs. In terms of outreach and coordination, I think I skipped one. In terms of outreach and coordination, city staff held an open house for Black Rock residents on May 23, 2016. Planning, code enforcement, legal, and republic services were present to answer any questions or address any concerns. Tim Foster, the Black Rock HOA president at the time, was the only person to attend. He indicated that he would take this information back to their HOA a few weeks later at the, their annual meeting. Code enforcement also mentioned they would be attending that, though I've not heard any feedback from that. Staff sent courtesy mailers to Black Rock property owners for both the P&amp;Z and city council meetings. Lastly, trash service has been coordinated and under the city contract will not change for Black Rock residents until the start of the new year if they are annexed. On the August 18, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this application to city council for approval, and tonight, city staff are requesting approval of this annexation and zoning, zoning application. I do have maps for each one of these properties, if you'd like me to go through those, but otherwise, I will stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, so to date, we've had no objection whatsoever from any residents in Black Rock.
Not one, not one.
Cool.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
I don't see anyone beating down the door. It looks like our, our team answered questions, had a thoughtful approach, and hopefully was able to put the questions to rest, and we appreciate all of your efforts. Any questions for Brian? Okay, counsel, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item 8H.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe one more question. Just looking at the, the agenda, so it says 67.5 acres, but then the, the breakdown of the different zonings, acreages adds up to way more than that. Is there a typo, or am I just, don't understand it? Or is it 67?
I hear eight.
I guess the breakdown doesn't really matter if it is 67. I'm just curious if it's a lot more than 67.
That's like 97. Thirty, thirty, almost, that 30.10 acres.
I think within, some of them, you've got R4s and R8s.
Councilwoman Palmer, or Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Palmer, I know the 67.5 is accurate. There must be a typo in the other ones there. I'm not sure which one it is without pulling it up, which I could do if you're interested.
No, no, that's fine. I just was curious if the 67 was accurate, or if it was-
The 67 is accurate, yes.
Okay, thanks.
It was a test.
Good job.
Counsel, anything further on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearings on H. 2016-0093.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 8H. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve H. 2016-0093, and let it be shown that it is on 67.5 acres of land.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8H. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. We already acted on item 8I. 9A is ordinance 16-1707. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 16-1707, an ordinance repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Section 9-1-16 regarding connection to city water system outside city limits, repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Section 9-4-26A regarding connection to city sewer system outside city limits, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective
Counsel, you've heard this read by title. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 16-1707 with suspension rules.
A motion and a second to approve item 9A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes. Counsel, any topics for our future meeting agendas? Hearing none, I do have, we have a couple of items coming up this week. The Chamber's send-off summer is on Thursday evening, out in the City Hall Plaza, from 5:00 to 8:30, 8:30. They're going to have food trucks and all kinds of activities. So please join Chamber members for the send-off to summer. I guess that's kind of sad, but it's going to be a nice activity in our downtown. The Treasure Valley Youth Summit, Safety Summit, is on Friday. If you want to experience the energy and enthusiasm and questions of 200 teens, we invite you down to Hu's to hang out with us and, and 200 teens. So 8:00 to, 8:03, 3:30, I believe. And then finally, our final youth farmers market is on Saturday. Would love to see your smiley faces down there, and, and thank the youth that hung in there to the last event, and thank them for participating, and encourage them to come back next year. So with that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
No second?
We're all asleep.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.